Everyone, and Happy New Year to everyone. This is the first meeting of the Concord School Board for the new year. And I suppose you're all sitting there wondering, why is she at the microphone? And why is she starting this meeting? But it is by practice and by policy of the school board that when you're reorganizing the school board, the superintendent opens the meeting and conducts the election for new offices. So, once the new officer is elected, I will quickly return to my seat. I promise you that. But anyway, thank you all for being here. I see we have our two new board members here, Kara Meeker and Sarah Robinson. And that's awesome to have you join the board. I know that the rest of the board members will express their congratulations to both of you for the positions that you hold. But before we begin, this is important since you have new language in your charter that the community voted on back in November. And that charter required certain things of the board. And one of them is around residency and domicile. And if I could, I'd like to take a minute and read it. It was question two on the ballot that you voted on in November. The amendment to clarify residency and domicile requirements for school board candidates and the process for filing or fulfilling vacancies to eliminate potential confusion in the charter caused by the use of a phrase, "school voting district," to define grouping voting wards. The first part of the amendment replaces the word "district" with the word "zone." So it was that we had so many districts made up of wards, and that was confusing since we are a school district. The Charter Commission felt that if we changed that verbiage to "zone," it would be more clear to folks in the community. The second part clarifies that if an at-large member moves out of the district, or if a school voting zone member moves out of the school voting zone, the school board must immediately appoint a qualified interim school board member from the district for either the at-large position or from the same voting zone that that person who was on the board came from. So, the interim member would serve until the end of the calendar year, when they are replaced by a newly-elected member, which would occur next November of '23. So, in doing so, I think it's appropriate that I, given the new language, that I will poll the members of the board. And I simply want to make sure that you are representing the zone from which you are elected. And I'll start with Mr. Richards. Are you a member of the zone from which you are elected?
Yes, I'm a resident of Zone A.
And what's your address?
My address is 3 Willard Street, Concord, New Hampshire. That is in Ward 3.
Thank you. Stop chatting.
Can I figure out what's on here?
I didn't read it.
So it was District C, so it would still be Zone C.
Right. All right. So, Mrs. Hastings, do you represent the zone from which you were elected?
Yes, I represent Zones C, and I live in Zone C.
And your address?
12 Godbout Drive in Concord, New Hampshire.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh, do you represent the zone from which you were elected? Oh, actually, you're an at-large.
I am an at-large member, and I live in the city of Concord. It's 7 Hanover Street.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, do you represent the zone from which you were elected?
I do. I'm in Zone 3 at 30 Max Lane in Ward 10. Yeah, I had to think about that for a second. Ward 10.
Zones, wards.
Exactly.
Zones and wards. It does get confusing. Ms. Higgins, you are also an at-large, and so do you represent the people of Concord?
I do. I live in Concord at 133 Liberty Street, which is right there.
Right around the corner.
Right up the road.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Meeker, do you represent the zone for which you were elected?
Yes, I do. I live in now Zone B, and I live in Ward 7 at 90 Rockingham Street.
Thank you. Mr. Weinberg, do you represent the zone that you represent the zone from which you were elected?
Yes, I reside and live in Zone B, Ward 5, at 35 Willard Drive, Concord, New Hampshire, 03301. If you want to note as well.
He lives in the fun zone, by the way.
I didn't know that. We'll make note of that. Mr. Cotton, I know that you are an elected at-large member. Do you represent the people of Concord?
I do live in Concord and at 13 Pont Place Lane.
Thank you. So, that clears that up. I thought it was important, since this is a brand-new charter, that you now are under to... The rules are set for you in this charter, and we must... We are all obligated to those, so I thought it was a good way to start, to make sure. There appears that we have a vacancy on the board. And before we can go any further with tonight's agenda, the board really has to make a decision about asking that the vacancy be filled. That's part of the process, that as a board, you would vote, you would move to request that the newly-elected president, and we don't have one yet, that that person be responsible for filling that vacancy. So I would accept a motion from anyone who is still moved. Thank you.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that matter?
The only thing I would add in a way of discussion is that when this decision is made, that there... That it not be a singular decision by one person on a nine-member board. This is a pretty important thing, that there could be some discussion around who that person might be. I realize it doesn't need to come to a vote. I'm not asking for any of that. But it's helpful as board members to know what's going on.
I think as Ms. Walsh pointed in another meeting, I think getting some public input is always valuable for this as well.
It is the president's decision, but we're not singular in this.
Any other further comments on that issue? Mr. Richards?
Yes, I believe if the policy is... Does actually state that it's the president with approval of the entire board.
Oh, perfect.
So I think that is that. But what I really wanted to say was, I just wanted to thank Ms. West for her service to this board and the community, and to the children of the district, as well as the citizens of our community. She is, you know, no longer residing in Zone A, but I just wanted to point out that personally, I appreciate all of her hard work and all of her contributions. You know, we will miss her and her input. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Any other comments before we vote on that motion? There being no further comments, all those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. So, now, we get on to the important part, so I can move from this seat to my normal seat over there. And I would open up the floor for nominations for the position of President of the Concord School Board.
Just before we start, I'd like to say a little bit of something around this. We have a lot of new people and a lot of first-term members still on our board. Pam, you're now a senior member as you're starting year four, so congratulations. No, you didn't do... You do one year of...
Yeah, I'm on my fourth year.
You're starting your fourth year. I think. At any rate, you're the most senior one. You were here for a year and then... So, what's important to remember is, we are not a political body. It's easy to get very politically driven when you're in any public service organization, but the students and taxpayers of Concord represent every political party, many religions, all different wage levels, educational levels, skin colors, you know, genders, all of it. Our children come to us as pure little children. We represent all of them, not just the ones whose families follow what we believe politically. What does this have to do with tonight, you ask? When I was first on the school board, this whole process was very, very driven behind the scenes. The acting superintendent at the time and a small group of board members would decide ahead of time who they thought would be the best for each office. And it was all set up ahead of time. And board members were asked not to nominate anyone else, just to support the nomination that occurred at the meeting. So, after witnessing this for a couple of years, I asked, how do we... You know, how can I be on a secretary or something? And was told by a current board member at that time that that wasn't how it worked, that my job was to support the existing members and how they felt the executive committee should exist. So, a current board member, another one, a guy named Nick at the time, and I nominated each other for an office at a meeting. And we didn't even get a second. And the point... We knew we wouldn't. We knew the nomination wouldn't get seconded, because that isn't how that board functioned. But it opened up a bit of a can of worms, because it showed how disingenuous the process was. I bring it up because we have to be careful as a board, that we're not asking people to run for certain positions or soliciting nominations for positions, because all of that reeks of political "pick me, pick me." And I've been... You know, I've participated in the process myself, because it's sort of how it's done. If you think somebody would be good as a secretary, a vice president, or president of the board, you simply nominate them. And somebody should second that nomination. Anyone who's nominated should have the chance to be voted for, or have the chance to say "no, thank you." Likewise, if you want an office and you don't get nominated for it, well then perhaps it just drives home the point that we aren't... We are not on this school board for what we want. We're here for parents of children. We're here for taxpayers. We're here for what's best for everybody, not just us and our beliefs. So I'm just laying that out there, so that we can have an obvious, fair, unbiased election. Thank you.
Oh, and with that, I'd like to nominate... Are we there? Bob Cotton as president. Is there a second to that? Come on now.
Thanks, anyway.
The floor is still open? Bob?
I'd like to nominate Jim Richards for the position of president. I've only been on the board for a year, starting my second year, but I've been impressed with Jim's ability to lead the board and to conduct meetings in a cordial, appropriate way. And I think having him, again, be president would place the board in good stead.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Jonathan. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the position of President of the Concord School Board? There being none, then I will close nominations and ask for a vote for the position of President of the Concord School Board. Mr. Richards is the only candidate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I abstain.
Aye.
Me too. We both abstain.
Did you abstain?
Yeah.
And you abstained. So there's two abstentions and six yeses. Well, then, it's all yours, sir, to finish. It was a pleasure.
Do you want me to come up there?
Oh, yes, I do. I know my role. Thank you, Kathleen. Including my name tag.
Yeah, this is down, so it does... It's a little cushion.
First of all, I'd like to just thank you, Mr. Cotton, for your very kind words. And I'd also like to thank everyone on the board. It has been my honor to serve as president of the board last year, and I pledge that I will do my best to do the best job I can for the coming year. And with that, we will move on to opening nominations for the Vice President of the Board. Mrs. Hastings?
I would like to nominate Pam Walsh for Vice President of the Board. She has impeccable organizational skills and understanding of government workings and how things run. And I think she'll do a great job keeping us on task.
Thank you. Is there a second to the nomination?
I second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President? I will nominate Barb Higgins for the position. She has served the board well, and I know that she would, you know, continue to do so and would like to be in that position again. Is there a second to the nomination?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Weinberg. Further nominations? All right. Not seeing any? I will close the nominations. And I'm not sure exactly how to do this, Superintendent. Do I ask all those in favor for each of the candidates, or...
Yes.
Okay.
If the first vote is distinctive, then you have to do the second.
Okay. So, since Ms. Walsh was nominated first, I will just do it in that order. All right? All those in favor of Ms. Walsh signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I did. We may have to do a roll call on this one, since I didn't do that. Okay. You want to just go for the second? Okay, let's see. All those for Ms. Higgins signify by saying aye. Okay, and I'll abstain. Ms. Walsh, you are the Vice President, as elected by the board.
Sure.
I will now open the nominations for Secretary. Do I have a nomination for Secretary of the Board?
I'll nominate Brenda Hastings for Secretary. I think Brenda would do a superb job and has been a really active member of this board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Is there a second to the nomination?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Walsh. Further nominations? Is there a further nomination for Secretary of the Board? Not seeing any? I will close the nominations and the call the vote for the candidate, Ms. Hastings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Me abstain. I abstain too.
Okay. Two abstentions. Okay. Two abstentions on this one. All right. Ms. Hastings, thank you, and congratulations. You'll be the Secretary for this year. With that, I believe we do have to go to the appointment of the Deputy Clerk.
Could I speak to that?
Yes, Superintendent, go ahead.
We did reach out to our clerk, our school district clerk, Patrick Taylor. He did reach out to Roger Phillips to see if he would be interested in this second position as an alternate, should Patrick not be able to do a task that the board needed. But at this... He asked him to continue to look. If he didn't find someone, he'd be happy to do it. But he's... I know he's probably... He's done it for so long, he's probably ready to hang it up. But he did tell Attorney Taylor that he would do it if he couldn't find anyone else. So, could I ask that you hold off on that for a while, till next board meeting? And we'll have... Hopefully, we'll have a name for you to put forth.
I will entertain a motion to delay the appointment of a Deputy Clerk, should the board want to make that... Someone on the board want to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay. Ms. Hastings, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Meeker. All right. Discussion?
Just a point of discussion. Can we specify that it will be considered again at the February board meeting? I want to just delay it.
Ms. Hastings, is Ms. Meeker... Are you amenable to that?
Yes, amendment.
Amendment? All right. So this will be delayed one month till the February board meeting. Any further discussion? I will just say that Mr. Phillips has done an outstanding job. He will do... Would do an outstanding job, but at the request of Mr. Taylor, our clerk, I will... I agree. I think this is probably good to delay for one month. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. We will postpone the appointment of a Deputy Clerk until the February meeting. And with that, I think that is the completion of business for the organizational meeting. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Higgins. Is there a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Mr. Cotton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned. We will start our regular meeting in just a few minutes. We'll let anybody who needs to stretch, stretch. You all right? All right. Thank you, everyone. That's mine. You can get rid of it. Thank you. Good evening. I would like to call to order the January... Regular January 2 meeting of the Concord School Board. This is our monthly meeting. It is January 2, 2023. And with that, Ms. Hastings, would you like to call the role of those in attendance?
Mr. Cotton?
Present.
Mr. Weinberg?
Aye.
Ms. Meeker?
Here.
Mr. Richards?
Here.
Ms. Higgins?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
And I am here, Ms. Hastings, and we have one member... How do we...
We have one vacancy that hasn't been filled.
Okay. We are here.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to approval of the agenda as presented and as published. Does anyone have any adjustments or additions to the agenda? Ms. Walsh?
I would like to add a discussion of Policy 115, which is the policy around filling vacancies for board members. We had previously referred this to the Communications and Policy Committee, asking them to take a look at it. And I think, given what's happening, we would like to accelerate that conversation and propose an amendment.
Okay. Where would you like to add that? Probably...
After the Instructional Committee?
Yeah, probably...
I'm going to ask to move it.
Yeah, we're going to move the Instructional Committee. That's my next thing, so... But probably at position item number 10 at this point. And is there a second to making that? Okay. All those in favor of adding that... Making that addition to the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Any... We'll add that in at number 10. Other changes to the agenda? And I will make the motion that we move the Instructional Committee report up to...
Hold on, 6A. Why are we moving that?
I want to move the...
Well, before public comment?
Is there anything to be voted on?
Yes.
Then we should have it after...
After public comment.
Immediately after public comment?
That's right.
So that'll be item 7.5. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. All those... And the reason... For discussion of that, we're doing that because Ms. Hastings has recently, you know, had, I guess, back issues, and we're...
Back surgery, yes.
Back surgery. And so we want to make sure that if she has to get up and leave us early, that we have covered that item.
Okay, I appreciate your commendation.
I'm happy you're doing so well.
Thank you. Me too.
Okay. With the... Is there any further discussion with regards to that motion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we'll make that adjustment to the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda that we want to make tonight? Not seeing any? I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Weinberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Robinson. And is there any other discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. All right, the agenda is set as amended. Next item up will be the consent agenda. This includes the minutes of the regular monthly meeting on December 5th, as well as the Capitol Facilities Meeting on December 7th. If no one has any issues with the minutes of those two meetings, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda and approve it.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cotton, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Walsh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. With that, we will move to item number four, student recognition. Superintendent, will you be presenting this?
I feel like it's musical chairs tonight.
You get to sit in all the different chairs of the, around the room.
With the glitter.
Thank you, superintendent.
So this evening, as part of the agenda, I would like to recognize a Concord High School student that has really made a difference in the lives of others. You know, so often, we hear about our students and our high school students and our teenagers, and sometimes, that picture isn't always in a positive light, and, and, you know, it, when you work with youngsters all the time, like we do, and, and we're at the high school, and we hear from our, our administrators, we know the kinds of contributions our students make, and so tonight, I wanted to be able to introduce you to a young lady who has accomplished great deeds. And so Alexandria Graponi, and she's smiling, and I'm glad to see that, who's a senior at Concord High School, was on a mission to alleviate childhood hunger, and along with members of the, a new club called Save the Children Action Network Club, she started a food drive by engaging Concord businesses to host boxes and, in their, in their businesses for people to donate food. And the, and in addition, by the way, the club is also setting up a coin, coin drive where, you know, our students can drop money into a box at, at the high school. But what a wonderful opportunity. And while she, she did this, she was spurred on by a visit to Washington DC, and supported by the New Hampshire Network for Child, to Save the Children Advocacy Action Network. And so I was very impressed, I think most of you know, there was a beautiful article in the newspaper about her accomplishments, and so what a pleasure it is to introduce Alexandria to you tonight. And I asked her if she would speak a little bit about her trip to Washington, because it was really pretty neat, and, you know, not every senior in high school gets a chance to do that and get to meet the people she met, so I'm going to let you talk a little bit about it, better you than me.
Thank you for having me tonight, it's such an honor to be here. Yeah, so I joined SCAN this past summer when I met Deli, she's the manager for New Hampshire for Save the Children Action Network, and I immediately heard about their message about wanting to helping children get access to early education and ending childhood hunger, which is something I'm really passionate about. And Deli called me up one day, and she said, hey, we want you to go to DC, like, all expenses paid, do you want to come lobby at Capitol Hill? I was like, yeah, I do. I have loved politics since I was a kid, I'd go with my parents when they would vote, and I'd pretend I was voting with them, but, so it was really awesome to be able to go to DC, to be able to train for like, two days, and to learn about these issues in depth, to get the data, the statistics, the facts, and we talked about crafting your story as an advocate, because you have to align your interests with other policymakers' interests in order to bridge the gap, because not all the politicians in DC are going to agree with what you have to say. So how can you make them hear what you're saying, and how can it look like a benefit for them? For instance, every dollar invested in the McKeeve bill had a $6 payback on it, so for the people who wouldn't agree with the policy, a money investment might be a bribing factor. So, it was really, really, really inspirational to be around so many like-minded people who were motivated, determined, and it didn't matter if people were from Louisiana, or if they were from New Hampshire, and we all just were working towards the common goal of helping children, and to be able to do it on such a big scale, and to talk to adults in the Capitol, I remember, I was talking to Jean Shaheen's aide, I'll never forget him, his name was Carrie, he just looked me dead in the eye, his pen kept flying, and he respected me, and he treated me as an equal, which was so cool to hear, because sometimes I was like, oh my God, like, will they actually want to hear what I want to say, and they do, and it was so awesome to do that, and I want to thank SCAN, it was such an amazing opportunity, and I'm very thankful for that, and to be able to run this food drive, and to make a difference, and to help kids in need, it's just, warms my heart, so thank you.
She is doing Concord proud, and the Concord School District proud. She is doing it around the country. We have highlighted her work around the country, SCAN's a national organization, and she is rising above and beyond a lot of what other students around the country are doing, so you guys need to be proud of her, I am really proud to know her.
So I told Alexandria before we started tonight that you perhaps might have a question or two for her, and so obviously you can see she's very articulate, so.
Go ahead.
So before, I don't have any questions, other than, how much fun did you have? Clearly you had a lot. But, you know, as a board member and a group that works for the betterment of children and making sure children can learn, childhood hunger, which leads to lots of illness and everything else, is a huge limiting factor, hungry children have a hard time learning. So the fact that you're focused on feeding people who have no ability to feed themselves for reasons far beyond them, is wonderful, it's just a nice way to channel energy, so thank you.
Ms. Walsh.
Where did the food you collected, what did you donate, donate it to?
Yeah, we dropped it off, I believe it was last Monday at Beaver Meadow School, yeah, and we actually got to go in their food closet, and it was pretty low, so it was good to be like, okay, we're restocking it, good, I mean, you walk down the halls and you see these little kids, it's like, oh my God.
Go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
Thank you so much, and that's, sounds like an amazing experience. I guess, what would you recommend for engaging other high school students to get involved like the way you did, and get involved with networks like SCAN and others to go lobby on Capitol Hill?
Yeah, I would say look for opportunities in your community, if you want to join SCAN, contact Deli, I would say, find what you're passionate about and follow that, because typically there will be some, some organization out there that wants to support that, and anyone at Concord High wants to join SCAN, you're more than welcome.
Good, go ahead, Ms. Hastings.
Just want to say congratulations and well done. I'm wondering, now that you've been bitten by the political bug, what's next?
Yeah, I hope to major in political science where I attend next year.
Great, good luck.
You're going to do great next year.
Excited, where are you going to go?
I have not, but I submitted all my applications, so.
That's a big step.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Alexandria, I was going to mention that, as a father of a senior, I know how busy the fall semester is with all of your applications, and not to mention, you have to still graduate this year and complete that, so it is truly impressive, you should be very, very proud, and I want you to know that we, in the school district and the school board, are very, very proud of you. So, thank you so much, and, you know, it's not a huge political thing, but, you know, I would hope when you come back, you consider the school board as an opportunity...
Yeah.
...for you to get involved, and continue your, you know, your dedication to the students and to the kids here in Concord, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
These are our grocery bags, and, wait, wait, wait. Yeah, Deli. You can crunch it up, and, so I brought enough for everybody, take one, take two.
Oh, thanks, Deli.
Thank you.
We're out there doing work for kids that you probably don't even know about.
We got to open the door.
We got your back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you ready? So one more celebration, and, you know, every month, we try to bring some youngsters in from our schools, and so tonight, we have some students from Runlet Middle School, and Mrs. Fitzgerald will introduce them. Yes, I have a presentation, so I'm going to try to look up. Come on up. So you'll have the pleasure of hearing from, yes, and the first, you can sit right here, Grace Van Pelt, Peter Van Pelt, and Sean Fuller, and they have a presentation, so I'm going to try to connect here, and I'll turn it right over to the representing Runlet Middle School student. They've done this completely on their own, they are, they've done a great job, I hope you think so too.
So, we're the RMS Student Council, and, um, and pretty much, we're a, we're pretty much just a group of students ranging from sixth to eighth graders, and our goal is just trying to make RMS as fun as possible for the students, because schoolwork gets to be a drag sometimes. Um, so we make a bunch of events for them to participate in, and not only do we, we're in charge of like, fun events for the students, we also set up fundraisers and help with rule change if there's something that's suggested, suggested a lot by students and some teachers, or something that actually like, needs to change a lot, and we just like, overall, try to make RMS a great place to be at, and we use our money made from everything, and so we can reinvest it into more events and save it for the next year, and so we can just keep going and going and going, and making fun events for the students. Um, and we've made a lot of pass all events already, and we're not even halfway through the school year, so we started out, um, started out with a Halloween, Halloween themed school dance, um, where they could buy tickets, and they could come in, and it was kind of just like, a full-on costume dance, they could bring their Halloween costumes. Then we decided to have both of them in the same week, we had a spirit week, which consisted of, um, it consisted of twin day, there's twin day, anything but a backpack day, comfy cozy day, and teacher and student outfit swap day, and we did those days, but we also had, we also came up with this event last year, and we decided to do it again this year, it was, it's our own event, we didn't steal it off the internet or something, called Secret Snowman, where you could anonymously buy a card, and it would be attached to a candy cane, and you could send it to like, one of your friends if you wanted to, or you could just send one to yourself, if you had a sweet tooth.
Sweet tooth.
Do you have some pictures of the spirit week at our school? As you can see, it was a big hit, everybody loved it, especially the teachers. So what events do we have planned? We, we had many event, we have many more event, events planned for the school year, we, we were thinking about a spring dance, classified cupid, which is basically the same thing as Secret Snowman, but with a little extra sprinkle of love, um, a movie night, and hoops night, which is basically basketball, and a spring carnival, which we did last What past fundraisers have we set up? We have done a fundraiser, and we have many more for the future. The first fundraiser we had was one of two ways to pay for a ticket to the Halloween Dance, which was food, they would come up and give the, and give us two cans of food, one can with $1 or $2 to get into the school dance, and then we donated all the food to a, to a local shelter.
Um, we have many more fundraisers planned, such as another food drive to donate to another food pantry, we always have room for fundraisers like this as a way to give back to the local Thank you for giving us your attention, and we'd be more, more than happy to answer any questions.
Oh yeah, you missed one. Go back.
But it's worth saying again, yeah, so.
I have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, go ahead.
Can anyone join Student Council?
Yes, any student in RMS, they can join it, whether they're a sixth grader that just showed up to RMS, or an eighth grader that's just about to leave, they can, anybody can show up and kind of just join.
Awesome, awesome, and do you have, how often do you guys get together to meet?
Uh, every week, we have two days every week, there's a Monday afternoon meeting, which we just had, and then there's a Tuesday morning meeting, so it can be flexible for everybody.
Oh, perfect, yep, yep, nice, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
Thank you for the presentation, so if someone wanted to support Student Council and donate money, how would they do that?
Um, if they wanted to, so we usually, we usually have stuff set up, we'll have events and stuff, but we'll also kind of implement a fundraiser into it, so we can have a fundraiser and the event, and then we also kind of, then we'll probably also accept like, donations for it.
So could they, could they call you right now, or could they call Principal Fitzgerald, I, um, what works best?
Like, if Jonathan wanted to give you his paycheck right now.
If I wanted to give you, my thousand-dollar stipend a year.
Where would you?
I'd call Ms. Fitzgerald, she's the head boss, she knows what's up.
All right.
So Pam would just give you the money?
I'll make sure it gets to the right place.
Other comments or questions?
Well done, you guys.
I would, yeah, I want to say, very, very professional presentation, you all spoke very clearly, and very, uh, in a very organized and thoughtful manner, and I just want to say, thank you, you clearly care about your community, because you're not, you can find out that not only can you do a lot of things for your community, but you can make Runlet a great place to be, as well as have a lot of fun, so you guys have taught not only your fellow classmates, but a few adults, I think, as well, some very good lessons, thank you for coming here tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
The part that they did leave out is that when the group decides on an idea that they have, they, they schedule an appointment with me, and they bring their idea to me, and so we have, they have a whole formal process that they've developed to get feedback and to, you know, to get things rolling, so it's a great group in the school, and they've done a lot of good, they really have.
Thank you, Principal Fitzgerald, it was very, very impressive young group there, thank you. All right, um, let's see, next item is item number six, recognitions and reports, and I believe first up is our student representatives' report from Mr. Brown and Ms. Anderson. Happy New Year, welcome back to school.
Yes, Happy New Year, everyone, I hope you all had a great vacation. Winter sports have gotten underway, and all have had games or meets, I think at the winter holiday basketball tournament that Concord High Team won, and, isn't that registered? Was it? Jeff, I think, so, yeah, okay. And in a few weeks, we're going to have an intercession week to end the semester, and students will have a chance to participate in different activities, and they'll have chances to meet with teachers for remediation and enrichment and activities before we move on to the second semester.
Hi, everyone, I'm glad to be back, December was a great month, especially for the students, as I think we were all ready for a good break. Today was the first day back, and students are resuming their academics, as well as preparing for the end of quarter two and the end of semester one, as Finn mentioned. Students are also excited for the added win Fridays, which is what I need, it's a 45-minute break, just an extension to our advisory, and different teachers have different activities or extra help planned for those times, and I definitely know that students are very excited to have extra ones during those months, and we have our first one this Friday, and then we also have an added one next Friday, and I think we all hope to have a great start to the new year, thank you.
And they selected the students for the next gap exchange program, so I thought I'd shout that.
All right, very good, thank you, Sophia, thank you, Finn, excellent. Superintendent, your report is up next.
Thank you, Mr. Richards, I have a couple of just reminder...
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Uh, I have a couple of just reminders for the board, if I could, tonight. Um, just reminder that we are moving to Outlook. And so if you have not done that and you need some assistance, please reach out to our technology department. I, I do have a list of people who have moved over to Outlook, and those that haven't, so I'd like to be able to check you off on this list, so be sure and check in with Pam McLeod, our technology director.
I promise to be last.
Um, yeah, we, we have a few. And the second is, remember, we're using multi-factor authentication, and so we, I need you also to participate in that. Uh, as you know, that has been implemented with our staff, uh, and that gives us a second level of protection and security, uh, when we're on our, um, our systems here in, in the district, so, and when people are using their, uh, their, uh, their computers and so forth at home, too. So, um, that's really important, and so, um, some of you have completed that task, others, um, still have to do that. So again, if you have a minute, and you can stop by and see Pam at the technology department, they'll get you all squared away, so that you have those protections. Those were just a couple of, uh, quick reminders. Um, I, my report tonight, um, is really, it's brief. Um, I won't take a lot of time. You have a very busy schedule, but I kind of wanted to go over some things that are happening in the district. Uh, today I met with our leadership team and just kind of reviewed where we were and where we're headed, um, as we, um, open this new year. And I, I think probably social studies and math and the curriculum department is probably where, uh, there's going to be a lot, you'll see a lot of work. Uh, there's been, um, ma- uh, an extensive, uh, work done in math. I, I know they're piloting, uh, potential materials, uh, in algebra. I know in, at the middle school, as well as the high school, they have a, a new algebra program that they're trying out. Um, we also know that we're working on the social studies curriculum. That curriculum, um, is aligned to the national C-three standards around national social studies, uh, competencies. So that work is, um, underway. Our teachers and our administrators, staff are very involved in that process. And, um, and when we're ready, we will bring those final, um, programs to the instructional committee and then to you, uh, for your review. So a lot, lots of things happening in the area of curriculum. Also part of that, Kim and I will spearhead a committee starting this month, uh, working with the Teachers Association in, in looking and reviewing at the teacher evaluation system. Um, as part of negotiations, we agreed, uh, in an amendment to that, um, the contract, that we would look at the process and the tools that we use to evaluate teachers. There's been a lot of questions about it, a lot of people interested in looking at it, and so working with CEA, uh, discussed it with Mr. McCary, the president of CEA, and they've also, um, given us some names, so we'll start that process, uh, this month. And that's really important. One other piece that, uh, the committee is working on, uh, Kim is leading it along with Pam McLeod, is looking at our grading platform. It's, it's trying to find the right tool in terms of helping teachers. Right now, they're using Teacher E's. Um, they, they have these pluses and minuses to it. Um, we're also looking at what the elementary schools and how they, and what tools they could use. So, uh, that committee has already been working, started in the late fall, early winter, and, um, I think you'll see some, uh, results of that, looking at how we use, uh, tools to, uh, to, to do the grading for students. Uh, they, they did a great job. I, uh, I, I think, I'm hoping that John's gonna talk a little bit about the Equity Committee later on, but we continue to, um, work on that Equity and Diversity Committee. And in your packet tonight on page one seventeen, you'll see a proposal, uh, around the, uh, we wanted to restart our Equity Advisory. And so Kim and I, Jonathan, have been working on a, a committee, uh, with New Hampshire Listens, to, uh, create a new organization for our Equity Committee. I think it will be, um, a very valuable, uh, tool. So if you take a peek at it, it's on page one seventeen, and I know that Jonathan will speak a little bit more to that. I, I have to give kudos out to, um, Jack Dunn and to Matt over the holiday. Um, we were concerned, and I know you were too, you expressed that in some emails to me, around the communication system at the high school. There seemed to be times when they, that, that the system worked, and other times it didn't work, uh, the messages were not clear, and we can't have that. It's not acceptable. And so Matt, uh, Matt and Jack were out over the holiday week, last week, uh, with a company called TNT, and they, uh, went through every single room in that building. They walked every single room. They listened. They made an incredible number of changes. Um, they, uh, took some speakers that weren't working. They found some speakers that the wires were not connected to the system. Um, they found boxes, speaker boxes, that were empty. Um, I don't know what anyone expected from an empty box, but, um, uh, we also discovered that the phone system that they used to make the announcements needed to be replaced. That has been replaced. So I, um, I think we had really good results last week. We still have some work to do. Um, uh, Mike Reardon and his team will be testing the system, um, frequently. We've asked them to do that. I noticed today that, um, they sent out a little survey to all the teachers, so if they didn't hear it, we could get that mis- uh, information back to us, uh, as soon as possible. I know that Jack and Matt even discovered some wiring. Now, I'm not an electrician, so bear with me, but wires that were not covered, that, that were really interrupting each other. So you had two wires going to one site, and they were, I don't know what the right word is, canceling, or what were they doing?
Shielded.
Shielded.
Yeah, and, and as a result, it caused, um, systems to break down, and messages not to be clear to the teachers in the room. So we think we're in good shape with that. Um, trust me, though, um, you know, it's an old system, uh, it's old wiring, uh, some of the wiring is protected, others isn't, so they've been going in and replacing a lot of that, so. I, I think we're in good places. I'll, I'll keep you posted on that. Um, and we'll certainly bring that to the attention of the Facilities Committee. In terms of finance, uh, we are working with our principals right now, all of our department heads, uh, to prepare for your budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, you know that you'll be tipping off, uh, your budget deliberations in February, February fourteenth. And, uh, so we're finishing up our second round with principals, so that we have a good, um, understanding of their needs and, and what the budget will bear. So that's ongoing, uh, with, uh, under Jack's leadership. Again, I can't say enough about Matt and his team. He really gets the kudos tonight. Um, you know, we've had power outages. We've had systems that went down, and Matt and his team have been fabulous. As a matter of fact, he implemented over vacation, a building check every morning. So we had his team out, including Matthew, out checking the buildings, making sure heat was working, their elec- electricity was on, all of the, um, the, uh, safety measures that we have in buildings were checked, so that we, um, knew that when we came back today, um, that we weren't gonna face an, another issue. So, um, again, uh, because of the power outages, it does funny things to all of our systems, and you don't know it, you don't realize it right away. And so by having that team out and about throughout the buildings over the last week, it's been, it's been very helpful. And by the way, we're gonna continue to do that. When the cold weather comes, and what that cold weather can do to our systems, um, and I, we've got to get the, we, kids need, our students need to be at school every single day, so, um, we'll do that. Is that the, is that the system, Matt? You can see we're all like on nerve now.
Sounds like my radiator.
Yeah, it's only the radiator.
My one hundred and fifteen year old house.
Uh, let's see. Other than that, um, we have completed the annual enrollment report, which is done every year here. I will, um, share that. Uh, Kim and I and John will share that at the Instructional Committee meeting this month, and we will pop it into your, uh, folder on the website, the School Board folder. Once it's approved by the Instructional Committee, we'll post it, so that people can see all the data around our enrollment, including student enrollment and staffing and all aspects, um, of our operation. I think that's it, unless you have a question.
All right. Questions for the Superintendent with regards to, uh, to her report? Um, I will just ask, I just want to reiterate, and I say I appreciate the work that, uh, Mr. Dunn and Mr. Cashman have done over this, uh, holiday session. The announcements at the high school and the PA system is a critical part of our safety systems, so I would, uh, just encourage you to continue with that and to update the board as you, uh, further test as to the reliability and the, you know, overall performance with regards to that. So thank you.
Will do.
Um, our report to the, I would expect that report probably will go to Capital Facilities first, so, thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you, Superintendent. At this point, we are at item seven, which is public comment, the first of our two public comment sessions. Uh, this one is for agenda items only. Uh, I do ask that everyone, um, who would like to make a public comment, please adhere to Policy one thirty-two, uh, for public comment. Um, and that includes, uh, please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in length. Um, please make sure it is per agenda items only. And if you're going to just repeat what someone else said, you can just say that you agree with them. And, uh, you don't have to go through all of it if you don't want to. And, uh, you know, with that, do we have any public comment for this evening on agenda items? All right. Not seeing any. I will let everyone know that we have a second public comment, uh, session later in the meeting. This is on any topic whatsoever, and, uh, you will, you can feel free to make your comments then. With that, we'll move on to the Instructional Committee report. Uh, we will look at, uh, I believe making this will be, uh, last board's instructional chairman, or chairperson. Uh, Ms. Hastings?
Thank you, and, um, there's a, there's a, several votes that need to be taken tonight by the board on these, and we had requested that you take a look at them prior to the meeting, so there's just a lot of information, and certainly will answer, um, I see Mr. Reardon is here to help answer any questions, and, and Mrs. Fitzgerald as well. So they can help with that if you have any additional questions. Uh, but I would start with, um, the first item, which is the proposal for a club lacrosse team at Runlet. They have done their due diligence. They did surveys. They've asked parents. They've asked students. And they do seem to have enough participation interest to, uh, staff two teams, or, or to make two teams. And, um, while there is a budgetary, um, cost of about thirty-five hundred dollars, it was explained, and please tell me if I get this wrong, but it was explained that that money is already in this year's budget for a coach that wasn't previously used in the fall sports. So although it looks like in addition to the budget, it's, it's not something that we would have to come and put in now, so that I think helps a lot, too. They have done a great job securing equipment, um, through donations, and, um, I've had, I, I know I've had a lot of people reach out, say how excited they are about this option, um, for kids to, to participate in an after-school program that's at school as well, so.
Ms. Higgins?
Um, I want to really speak to support this. As a longtime athletic coach in this district and others, um, most towns the size of Concord have significant middle school programs in all of the sports. What this does is it allows for children that have transportation issues, financial issues, social issues, et cetera, to participate at a level that those that can afford a club program can. Um, also, in looking at just the competitive nature and participation, we have healthy lacrosse programs at the high school. That's not an issue here. But it's amazing what a middle school program will do for the overall quality on many levels, not just winning and losing, but all of it. Having a middle school program, those, you know, those coaches work together. Um, I just think of the chunk of students at Runlet that would do this. Um, and for every current lacrosse player on a club team, their best friend who doesn't do it is now gonna join lacrosse, which means all those kids are busy after school. So this warms my heart to hear this, and that, not surprisingly, that group of parents has historically been, been, um, really, really organized and motivated, sh- equipment sharing, all of that kind of stuff. Um, I remember when lacrosse first came to Concord High, I was coaching track, and I thought I was gonna lose half my track team to lacrosse, and I did. But I got just as many new kids that never would have thought of doing track, because it just opened up room for everyone, so. I'm sure you don't mind that I'm pushing you to do this.
No, you're saying everything that I was, that I was going to say, so no, it's perfect. It's perfect.
This is wonderful.
And your point about, um, more kids will be able to access a sport, um, that they wouldn't otherwise be able to access.
That's right.
So there's, you know, some, some equity there.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think that was one of the things, because we know that we have students who really would like to play, but they don't. There are barriers, and this would be removing.
Yeah, and there's nothing better than wearing your school on your shirt. You just feel so proud of yourself, yeah.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion, um, that, on the recommendation.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question?
Go ahead, Ms. Higgins.
The twenty-eight hundred, it's two, twenty-eight hundred times two, two coaches, two separate coaches, a boys' coach and a girls' coach?
Yes, I believe so.
What stipends weren't used, and do we expect that to continue forward next year?
That I'm not sure.
We do, we did discuss that. Um, that was covered in the, I, I want to say K. Does that make sense? K? Is that level K? Is there, I say you can.
They didn't need as many assistant coaches.
Soccer, okay.
Right.
Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, and, um, is the transportation cost covered as well?
That was the one area that I think was a little bit, um, murky at this point, just because of gas prices and, and drivers' availability.
So can you absorb in your budget, or?
For, for.
I, assuming we can get the drivers, which I know is an issue.
For practices and things like that, we, we have an agreement with our twenty-one C bus and, our twenty-one C buses and our athletics, so they combine for practices and things like that. And for games, I believe that that, they had figured that in. I'm pulling up the document right now.
Yeah, and I'm looking at, it says transportation for ten scheduled away games, um, and the cost of officials for ten home games, for a total of about fifteen hundred dollars, that they felt they could absorb.
Okay, that, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Maker.
In that same vein, I do have a question about the equipment, uh, just more of a clarification question. Um, the original proposal says that students would provide their own equipment, um, and those that cannot obtain it would be assisted by the crush, which I think is the community team.
Yeah.
Um, but it also sounds like we have some, uh, donations of equipment that have been secured. So I was just wondering, um, if we could just clarify, uh, if the equipment is covered for all the students that would be participating in the spring, um, and the, what the estimated cost would be if we needed to replenish that equipment on an annual or, you know, semi-annual basis?
My understanding from Coach, um, Owen. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just fuzzy today. Um, from Coach Owen was that this would be an ongoing yearly, as students from crush or other programs outgrow their equipment, it would be handed down to continually supplement.
So it would be a multi-year commitment to donate?
Yes, yep.
All right, thank you. Uh, my, my only concern is the idea that we get this, because of the initial excitement, we get this push of equipment, but without any kind of agreement, then the equity piece tends to drop off if there isn't financial assistance for those that can't afford their own equipment.
And my understanding was, again, that they, they planned for that.
Okay, thank you.
It was, they did a great job with that presentation.
And it's in your board book.
Yeah, the other thing I took into account was.
Page one sixteen.
I'm sorry, was field space and, and things like that. They, they really did a pretty comprehensive, um, look at, at what the needs were and how they could be met within our existing structures.
Thank you.
Other questions? Proceed, Ms. Hastings.
Well then, with, um, on the recommendation of the Instructional Committee, I move that the board vote to approve the request to offer lacrosse as a spring sport at Runlet Middle School beginning this spring of twenty-twenty-three.
So moved?
I was gonna say, move, I need a second. She just made the motion.
Oh, I see, second.
Second, okay, so the motion has been.
I thought you were asking for a motion.
Motion has been made by Ms. Hastings and seconded by Ms. Higgins. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Weinberg, go ahead.
Just to clarify, this is a second reading? Uh. Or this is a first reading, or we're doing it in a single reading? I just want to make sure we're clarifying.
This is, this is not a.
This is an instructional committee, so we don't talk about a policy.
Oh, so this would be just a recommendation to the board.
Thank you, sorry.
This one. No, that's okay. Good question. This one, no, that's okay, good question. So, any other questions or further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Congratulations.
Can't wait to watch a game?
Yes. Great, thank you.
The board is invited to come watch some of these games, right?
Always.
Good.
Moving on to item number two, that also will require a vote, are high school course changes and/or additions. And there are six of these course additions and changes that I'm hoping you have had some time to look over, and was hoping to make a motion to vote for them as a, in bulk form, but we can always pull them off, obviously, to discuss things, or we'll pull one or two off, or we can do it in different ways, but I thought rather than asking for ten separate votes tonight, I would group as much as I could.
So, can you, I guess for the benefit, well, I'd just like a summary of each of the courses for the benefit of those that are watching at home as well as.
Sure. The, the new courses would be, one was the Art of Influence, which would be a semester-long course with no additional cost to the school district. One would be a Literature of Survival course. It would be combined with a Science of Survival to create a learning pathway for students, and again, no additional cost for staff. New would be an A P Art and Design course. There is an additional art teacher in next year's budget, which would absorb that class, which, and that would be great, and this is building upon, Mr. Riordan, please help me if I'm missing, misinterpreting, a building on a course that's already available for a semester, but it would allow students interested in going on to art schools to dig deeper, and really take a year to expand their, their projects. And, and we had a chance to see some of the projects that students had done, and they were spectacular, the detail that they've been able to get with extra time. And it's a, there's writing involved with it. It's, it's not just an art, creating your art, it's studying your art, studying people who are known for that kind of art, and, and then how art can help as they move forward. So, it, it was very interesting. New also would be a Beginning Piano class, and there's no additional cost to that. There are new keyboards already in the budget for next year, and these would be keyboards that would be able to be moved around to different parts of the, different models, with, that would be able to be moved around to the building so that students could practice at different times. We also have an A P Precalculus, and this one was really fascinating for me to learn about. It's a year-long course, there will be no additional costs, new text would be absorbed in their textbook accounts that they already have in line. And what we learned that I, I thought was pretty interesting is that more, there's a preponderance of students who go to college without the right, I'm saying this wrong, the right, the math courses that they need to be able to go in and start college math courses right away. So, this would allow for some students who know they want to go into those math sciences to come in and be able to start right away taking college-level courses and not having to go back and do some remedial math in order to then be able to go into the math sciences that they are interested in studying. Jonathan?
I was going to say, if I could, I can add a bit.
Yes, please, because you were there, yes.
Um, so, if students were to start their first year of high school, taking algebra, you would have to double up if you wanted to make A P Calculus. And what this does is now enable students to be able to achieve an A P course during their senior year without needing to double up. So, it creates a lot more accessibility and opportunity for that. And for the two English courses, they're trying to integrate English eleven into kind of different, more variety, and it kind of provides all the various, like, media options.
Back how it used to be in the olden days.
Yeah, so, you, so you learn about subjective media, influence and such, kind of, but it's now rolled out throughout other stuff as well.
And then, the last one, which was Personal Finance, this is a required course that is through House Bill sixteen-seventy-one, and this year it was allowed to be a roll-in course with already, with classes that you already have, but as of starting next year, it needs to be a standalone course offered to students. And they really have not given us a lot of direction on how and what needs to be in there. And we do have a course currently that is taught through the business, is that correct?
Yeah, did you get Danielle's email?
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
And that is taught through the, the money management, which is more of a, it's.
When you look at the two classes, however, the proposed math class and that, the existing class, they're really pretty much the, the same thing.
They are, and all we want to do is, is list it this year as a math slash business course.
Right, as long as they're not creating a second class.
We are not creating a second class. It is not that at all.
It would be the same.
Mr. Matt, uh, Mr. Riordan, do you want to come up?
Oh, I thought maybe, yeah.
Well, I was just going to add that this, it hasn't been decided by the high school if this is going to fall into the math department or the business, or be a math slash business. And there is a certification that the, the D O E has not yet outlined what the certification requirements are for this course. So, by voting for this, will, it's, it's a requirement, so we, it's a mandate. And by approving this course does not necessarily mean it's approving which department it falls into at this point. What we're looking at is making sure that we get it into the program of study.
So, we're approving a course that already exists?
No, we're not, we're not approving money management. The title of the course has to be Personal Finance.
Okay.
And the guideline, more guidelines are coming out from the D O E.
So, I guess where I, as a former educator in our district, and where I get a little nervous, is that we have an existing program with teachers that work hard teaching it. So, if we don't know what we're doing yet, or what's required of us, or where it's going to fall, my comfortable thing is to table it for now. It's not going to stop anything from happening until we can actually vote on something that isn't now creating a second class that may or may not replace it in existing class, and it might be math, and it might be business, and.
I'll turn it over to Mike, because we do have guidelines for the, for the course.
Okay.
It's just when we had a phone conversation with the D O E, Nate Green indicated it could fall under economics, it could fall under business, it could fall under math, and that's a decision that needs to be made at the site.
As long as we won't, won't have to say to a teacher so long, because you're no longer qualified to teach a class.
That's why we want to do it as math slash business.
That's where I'm coming from, Mike.
This would not impact staff.
We actually had a discussion, we being myself, Mr. Herbert, Ms. Hillstro, who teaches the course, this afternoon about this issue. As Ms. Charlotte pointed out, we haven't received a lot of direction from the D O E yet, beyond the fact that we have to offer this. I'm pretty confident that when we do get more direction, that the competencies and skills that are taught in money management will meet the criterion that the D O E is looking for. When we talked about this at the instruction committee, the key point, not that I want to go into this now, was that, that money management or personal finance, or whatever we call it, not be taken for one of the math credits. We're going to be talking in a minute about raising the credit requirements at the high school, and I, I think our primary recommendation is that we raise the math credits from three to four, and that, that's really what our focus is. The money management course, we talked about today, possibly making it a semester course for next year. It's a full-year course right now, of doing some pretty rigorous marketing around it. I think kids, at least in my experience, are pretty interested in how money works and understanding how they can use that power. So, I think this, the, the money management course can still be pretty successful in that format, but the key issue from our point of view overall was separating it from being a math course, available for math credit.
Other questions?
So, to be clear, we should, we should support it here?
Yes, we should support it. I hope.
I just want to do the right thing.
Okay. Ms. Walsh?
The pianos, the keyboards included in the budget, is that included in your proposed budget to us, or in a budget you already have?
No, it's, it, well, it's, he gets keyboards every year.
Okay.
If, if Beginning Piano goes through, if, if the board supports it, he's going to get a different model that will be more applicable to a Beginning Piano course.
But not necessarily more than he normally gets or.
He was quite explicit about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cotton?
Just, just a comment, not really a question. I'm, I'm excited to see this Literature of Survival course in, in the book that you picked, The Last Revers by Ty Gagney, is an excellent book, and, and I would hope that you guys can figure out a way to get Ty to actually come and present to the course, because he's, he does a good presentation as well.
I agree.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Riordan.
So, I guess at this point, I would, I'm asking, would you prefer to vote on these as one whole thing, or do you want to separate them? What would you guys like to do?
Is, go ahead, is there any preference I was going to ask?
Oh, I was just going to make a motion for the full slate, and if someone wanted to pull something out, then.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion has been made by Mr. Weinberg and seconded by Mr. Cotton. Any further discussion with regards to the six courses proposed? Not seeing any. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, next item that we have is going back to pre-COVID mastery of competencies versus acknowledgement of competencies. And I have to explain that I didn't really understand what that was, because I wasn't on the board when that happened. But, pre, when, when COVID hit, there was a switch that we had, what, Jonathan?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
I was going to see if you needed any.
Oh, yeah, no, I may. There was a switch from having a two-point-five average on each competency in a class to a two-point-five average of the class in general, because students were in and out, and things were crazy. This is a request to go back to the pre-COVID way of grading, so that each competency would require a two-point-five average to pass the course. And it's something that we could do as, as just the instructional committee, but thought that it should come to the full board with all the new faces and different thoughts and stuff. So, this is just procedural and bringing us back to where we were before COVID. Then it would be starting next, with next year's year classes, not this year's, starting with the twenty-twenty-three year.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead, Ms. Higgins.
Is there a general feeling, district-wide, that we're ready to be, I mean, school-wide there, that, that, you know, just, we're, we're never going to be the same as we were before COVID, so, does this, so, you know, where are we now, and, and is our student body really ready to be there yet? Not that I'm trying to make it too easy for anyone or anything like that, but are we there yet, or do we need to look at it differently?
I think we are there. We never want to put our students in a position where they are not going to be successful. A competency is by definition something, conceptual understanding, a set of skills that you need to progress in that field of study. So, our, our decision at the beginning of the COVID disaster was that kids were under a lot of stress. We all were, and that it made sense at that point to kind of take a step back and give a passing grade based upon an overall two-point-five or above for a course. We are suggesting now that, well, very quickly, just as an illustrative point, you, a student could, could conceivably have a two-point-seven for the whole course, but still not receive credit if he or she hadn't passed one of the competencies.
Correct.
We're saying, because a competency is by definition something you need to know to progress, that we would like the board to support asking our students to master all competencies in order to receive credit. I would also point out that our students have ample opportunity and support through things like our win days, that our student reps were talking about today, summer work.
Right, we're back in, you can go get help now. You're not stuck in your living room with your computer in your lap.
Not to mention seeing your, your teacher after school.
Right, right, yeah.
To, to, to get caught up. So, I think this, this makes sense for our students.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
So, I would like to move that the board vote to return to the pre-COVID mastery of competencies versus the acknowledgement of competencies.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Walsh, I believe. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riordan.
And the one last thing that I have for you tonight is, oh, is increased credits for graduation. In October, Principal Riordan proposed a modest rollout program to increase the number of credits required to graduate from twenty to twenty-four, over a two-year period, beginning with a class of twenty-four. A survey was sent out to parents from both Runlet and Concord High, as those would be the parents that would be mostly affected by this, and results showed support for doing that, and these, all this, the survey results and everything are in your board book for you to take a look at. So, the proposal is that, starting with a class of twenty-twenty-four, graduation credits would rise to twenty-two-point-five from the current twenty-one that we have, and this growth would come from math credits going from three to four, and elective credits rising from four to five, and social study credits rising from two and a half to three. There could be an additional art teacher required for this, as art is the one course, or one section that is almost always so full that students can't get in, and that could go for an elective for some students, or, or as a primary for, for others. The plus for that, for me, is that it would, that an additional art class would dramatically reduce the number of students in study halls, because we have an, an ordinate number of students in study halls, as.
Well, if students can, are consistently not able to get into a class, then we need to better staff that department anyway.
Absolutely, right. So, we, we, it wouldn't affect us right away, but it was something we would need to put on our radar, that radar for the future. And the increased social studies credits would help students prepare for the mandatory civics exam, which is required for graduation per the D O E. So, you know, it's, it's just giving us more time with students in classes, helping them. In the class of twenty-twenty-five, graduation credits would rise to twenty-four, science credits would go from three to four, and there's talk of an out-of-classroom requirement, and you could get a half-credit.
It wouldn't be twenty-twenty-five, just as a clear.
I thought it was twenty-seven, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, I don't know, this says twenty-twenty-four, but I thought it was twenty-twenty-seven, ninth grade, okay, yeah. I was looking at this and I think that's not what I remember, but it's what it says.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
It'd be a busy senior year for.
Yeah, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So, the class of twenty-eight, the cred, credits would rise to twenty-four, science credits would go up from three to four, and again, that out-of-classroom requirement, you could get a half-credit for a semester, or a full credit for a full year. And this is going to need a lot of planning. This is, this is a proposed item at this point, wouldn't have any personnel implications for the next two to three years while it gets ironed out a little bit. And there has been already, I, I felt, a lot of consideration on the high school team for making sure this is something that all students would be able to do. You know, we know that a lot of our students have other responsibilities outside of the classroom, and don't always have the means and supports to be able to maybe do an out-of-classroom project. And I think that there's, there's plenty of thought being put into how can we make this doable for all of our students, whether that means maybe you do some of your out-of-class project during your day, we provide transportation, or we, we, there's a lot of thought going into that. So, I know that that's a concern for people, but it. for people, but at this point it is only proposed. And I think that you have a, a staff and, that's really thoughtful about those kind of things and wants to make all students successful. So I would ask, I guess, that we have a discussion about whether this is something we want to do.
All right. Do we vote on this or no?
Uh, do, yes. This is a proposal that was brought from the instructional committee.
Yes.
To the, to the board.
Yep.
To, with regards to the number of credits, the only thing that is, I think, still up in the air would be whether or not those credits would include, would have to include
Right.
an out-of-classroom requirement.
Right.
And at this point, it's just. That has nothing to do with the number. Right.
Does not have anything to do with the total number. So.
I, I guess, in order for us to get to a discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve the credit incre, incremental credit increase for Concord High School.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Weinberg and seconded by Ms. Higgins. Discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
Um, I have a question or, I, I appreciate how thoughtful this is and I, I support, I appreciate that you've identified where our students need additional time and energy and focus. Those credits on there. I would like a commitment that there will be periodic reporting as you develop the 2028 proposal. You know, I think the board, you know, this, this out-of-school credit, you need time to work on it. I understand that, but I, I want to make sure that it comes back to us and that we get updated on it periodically is where it's going.
That's, and, and we know, we knew when we made this proposal the first time that we didn't have the detail around that yet. We need to work, or somebody needs to work on that next year. And I think, I think that.
Ready to hear it?
I think that what's going to come back will be a menu of options for kids. Things like community service, capstone projects, obviously college courses and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. And for those listening at home who didn't get that, that's because Mr. Riordan is retiring at the end of this year.
I've heard that rumor, yeah.
I've heard that rumor, yes. So other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Weinberg.
I guess just as a clarification, this wouldn't be for any existing students in the school as well, I think. Just for anyone who's currently, if between ninth and 12th grade, the credits will not be increased for you.
So we wouldn't want them to worry.
But if you're an eighth grader.
But also, great information was provided to us that the majority of our students already graduate with more than the 21 credits. So this really is going to affect a small number of our students and we're hopeful that, that the pathways, programs that we'll have, it's going, it, it won't be just a number. It will be, it will be beneficial to them.
May I ask a question, Ms. Riordan? How does this proposed number of credits compare to other districts and other high schools?
We did, we did a fairly comprehensive survey of sister schools of similar sizes and, and most of them are around 24 to 26. Most, most are at 24. A lot of those high schools also have a variety of diplomas that they offer based upon a number of credits that a student might endeavor to, to earn. We are pretty uncomfortable with that. We think that our, our kids should all be going after the same meaningful diploma. And this is the proposal that we're making.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Meeker.
I am supportive of this rollout. I think it's a great plan that you have put together. I'm sure a lot of thought has gone into it. I do see in the parent-student survey on page 95, the question of if we are going to raise credits, what academic departments do you feel should be increased? And I'm noticing that way at the bottom is math and it receives the fewest thumbs up from parents and students.
I can explain that to you in one, in two words, my incompetence. I left, I left math off and it was most obvious when we set the thing out. So that was just, that was just an error.
So you're saying that not all parents hate math?
No.
That makes me feel a lot better as a, as a future student that would be, you know, taking this new increased credit requirement. I was curious about that answer. So thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you, Ms. Meeker, for an excellent question. Appreciate that. Other questions or comments? All right. Not seeing any. We have a motion on the floor that has been seconded. So at this point, I'll call a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All those abstaining? All right. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Ms. Hastings?
I think that's it. I think that's all we had.
And that's it?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So do you want to take a quick recess?
I am going to step away if you don't mind. I've reached my, my limit.
I appreciate that. Appreciate the fact that you have attended at this point. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, if you want to take a quick.
You will take a quick recess just for five minutes, just to cool down a little. Thank you. We're in recess, we are currently in recess for five minutes.
We're back from our recess and at this point in the agenda, I believe we are at Personnel, Superintendent, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Good, uh, will you be handling it?
Yes, I will be handling it tonight.
Thank you.
From Michelle. I have two, two issues tonight under Personnel. The first one is a leave of absence request that you granted last year. The employee, the former employee is asking to rescind that request. She asked for personal leave, you granted it, and things have worked out for her. And we were in need of a teacher out at Millbrook and to be a substitute to cover classes. And as you know, we've been really struggling finding people to do that work. And she is willing, if you allow the rescinding of her request, to come back and help us out as a substitute, long-term substitute over at Millbrook.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions and I think probably some of the other board members may as well. So this individual was granted a full-year leave of absence.
That's correct.
Okay, and that does not involve pay or does involve pay?
Does not.
Okay, does it involve benefits?
Does not.
Okay, so this person is asking to, instead of having a full-year leave of absence, to just have the leave of absence end now halfway through the year and to return at, to be a long-term substitute?
Right, it won't be, right, prior to her departure, she was a classroom teacher. This is not a position that, she's not returning to her current position. She's just returning to be, to help us out with, with long-term subbing. We have two maternity leaves out there that need to be filled, and so this is perfect.
At the long-term sub rate of pay?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, were the questions that I had. Other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Higgins.
So, do we have to rescind a leave of absence? Can't she still be on a leave of absence from her classroom job but work for the district as a long-term sub? Like?
We don't usually do that. Once you grant that leave, then to have them come back. I mean, we've had other people who have asked for leaves for reasons.
Okay, so technically, we need to rescind it. That's just my, that's all.
Yeah, I, I would, I think it would be cleaner if you rescinded it and then just allowed us to continue. We, we wouldn't bring her forward for a position because she's not a, she's not like a classroom teacher or a teacher that's holding a particular position. She's just helping with a long-term sub.
Right, and then she comes back?
Then, well, um, yes, I assume she will be back in the, in the, in the spring, seeking a position.
Right.
Ms. Walsh.
I just want to make sure that this doesn't trigger anything in our contracts with our teachers, that she would have to get paid at her teacher's rate of pay or be entitled to her position if we rescinded the leave?
Well, that was sort of where, yeah.
Where Ms. Higgins was going, I think, you know. Did she get offered a one-year contract last year and the, a contract last? Was she approved for a contract last year?
She was approved for a contract last year. Then she submitted a letter to the board, as you, you may or may not recall, in the, in the late spring, asking for a leave for personal reasons. And so there's no expectation that she returns at a regular teacher's salary because the position doesn't call for that.
But if we rescind her leave of absence as opposed to hiring her as a long-term sub, are we, are we required to honor her original contract if we're rescinding her leave of absence?
She's no longer on a leave.
I hear what you're saying, but my concern is, is that we have, well, I don't know, I don't know if I want to get in in a public way. I think it's a personnel issue when we talk about people's situations, and that's kind of what's happened here.
Right, right.
While we are still in public, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Haven't we, and it's a follow-on to Ms. Higgins' question because I sort of see the same thing, I think, is haven't we granted leaves of absence from a position to have they be a math tutor or go to a different position while still on that leave of absence? And wouldn't we handle it this way?
Yes, that's correct, but they're, they have a contract.
Does this person?
They're going from one position to another with a contract.
Does this person not have a contract? So in other words?
This position is, doesn't have a, hold a contract.
We need substitutes.
Not the, not the substitute position, her prior position, is she's expecting to return to that position again? And are we obligated to give her that position at the end of one year at this point?
Well, we did, we granted her a leave of absence, you granted her, which allows her to return to that position and in the fall.
Okay, so I still have the questions that Ms. Higgins and Ms. Walsh has. I personally still have that question. If this is more appropriate in a non-public session, we can do that.
No, or can we word it? We, we are rescinding her leave of absence from the district, however, not from her prior position, so that she can now take on this other position, long-term sub.
Right, you're not rescinding any position, you're rescinding her request for leave.
Yes, but, but she's, when you look, we rescind the leave, it sounds like she should go back to her job, so we just have to clarify in there. We're rescinding her, her leave of absence from, yeah, I don't know, it's weird, this is funny. I, I feel like she should, like if she, she could go get a job in a different district, long-term subbing, and she doesn't have to rescind, you know what I mean? Like, because she's not doing the same job and it's not a contracted position, does it matter?
May I?
Go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. I noticed that in our board packet, it's, this individual has made it clear that they are aware that the first-grade teaching position has been filled for this school year. I think this is just like a paperwork kind of funky thing, and it seems to me that she's fully cognizant of the fact that, you know, she's not, she's going, just looking to be...
Oh, I'm not assuming she'll suddenly want her job back, but...
That's what, she's aware of that. I mean, the letter is on page forty-three in your packet, and so, but we wanted to be clear, because you had granted it, expecting that she was out for the year, and then all of a sudden, she's back in a position, it's a, it's a long-term sub or, you know, whatever.
Have we consulted our legal counsel about whether we have any?
I did, I have not, I have not.
I would ask that that happen before we vote.
I don't feel like there's a problem, but I, but it's, I don't know why we need to do anything about it. Yes, she's back, but she's not in her job, and she's not even in a contracted position.
But she has a contract.
She has a contract.
She was offered a contract last...
Oh, I thought Catherine said that.
A teacher, a full-time teaching contract. So if we rescind her leave of absence?
She goes back.
She goes back.
She comes back as a teacher.
Right, that's what I mean.
And to answer Ms. Robinson's question, which is good, and we know that this person's not expecting it, however, the union may stress this position that we would have to do.
Let me do this, then, let me check in with our labor attorney and make sure that we don't have any problems. We've had this discussion, I just want to make sure it's, we're doing it carefully because we do have other people out on leaves.
Right.
Yes, I do, I want to clarify, I don't have any problem with her taking a long-term sub. I just don't want to rescind this and have it say, well, then she automatically by the legal contract, she becomes a...
Maybe we modify the leave of absence, you know, we modify it rather than rescind it. That her leave from her job continues, but she'll be, you know...
That's an interesting one. I, I think maybe if we, we look at it from modifying the, her, her request rather than a rescinding.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's still a leave from her contracted position, however, she, in the meantime, can fill in as a sub.
So Superintendent, we do not want to inhibit you in any way of hiring long-terms or having long-term subs available, however, I think that you should go back and we should get our legal opinion on, with regards to the contract she currently has. Thank you.
And I know you understand that we are, we continue to struggle a bit with hiring.
Yeah, and it's wonderful that she's willing to do it, so it's a, we just need to word it right, I guess.
Okay, time. And the other position is a Title I reading teacher for Beavah Meadow to complete the year. Her name, let's see, Janine Tranfa, T-R-A-N-F-A, graduate of Southern New Hampshire University in two thousand and nineteen, so we'd like to bring her forward to help with our Title I reading, which, as you all know, is critical.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Weinberg and seconded by Ms. Walsh. Is there any other discussion? This is on page forty-four of your board book, if you're looking. Any discussion or questions? Not seeing any, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, thank you.
That's all I have under Personnel.
Very good. With that, we will move on to communications and policy. I will handle that, as Ms. Cannon was the, the chair of this. First thing on our agenda is a, a change in a, for the, with regards to policy number five thirty-nine, student safety and violence prevention. This is the bullying policy. We had this, the, the committee had looked at it previously, and we had sent it back. There are a couple of changes that needed to be made with, and that, in fact, there are three items that I want to discuss. The first change dealt with the definition of bullying. In our current policy, the five thirty-nine, it contains the wording that the perpetrator had intended to cause harm to the individual being bullied. Because that is more stringent, I'd say, or more strict than the RSA, than the legal, we had a, you know, I believe a legal question as far as the fact that we couldn't put that in there, and it was recommended to be changed to physically harms a student or damages the student's property, and that be inserted in its place so that we were in compliance with the, with RSA one ninety-three F three. The second recommendation was removal of examples of bullying behavior, hitting, slapping, pushing, because though negative behavior, it doesn't always constitute bullying and may be just a part of developmental behavior, and it was felt that to just omit those examples and that let each individual situation more or less stand on its own and be considered on its own. The third recommendation had to deal with investigative procedures, and this was a matter of having to fill out the entire additional five-page investigative form. If the, if the incident was determined to be a non-bullying determination, parents of the parties involved would still be notified and support or measures discussed as appropriate, but this would just require a shorter form as opposed to the five-page investigative form. So I believe everyone has seen this and had an email relative to these changes, so at this point, I would make the motion that we accept the policy with the changes indicated. And also, I would ask that because we are out of compliance with the law, that we do this as a expedited first and second reading, which would require the two-thirds majority. So with that motion, is there a second?
Seconds.
And then a discussion?
A possible friendly, if we could just say pursuant to policy one forty-one, which is about the emergency protocol for how to pass the second reading.
Certainly, I am more than, you know, willing to accept that as an amendment, so. Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Now, having been moved and seconded, now, discussion on any of these items. Not seeing any, I will thank the committee for doing this extensive extra work. I know they had wanted to bring it to us in December, but with that, all those in favor of the policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That policy passes. Thank you. The second policy is policy six fifty-one. Policy six fifty-one is a citizen's request for reconsideration of library and instructional materials. We had, I know that the committee discussed the term, the definition of citizen at length, since we have numerous schools that send their students to, to the Concord High School And this, this one was a clarification, and with regards to the process, I hope everyone had a chance to read that policy, and the, the committee brought it forward and made the recommendation that this policy, this would be a first reading and then would have a second reading prior to approval at our next monthly meeting. And so, I, you want to make that motion or do you want me to make the motion?
I can make the, the motion that the board move policy six fifty-one onto a second reading.
All right, and I will second that motion. Now, discussion of the motion.
To elaborate, I think we were looking at how to have enough latitude while also recognizing who, like, falls under the category of citizen. I, I know when we were seeing what other districts kind of defined under this, there are actually much more restrictive definitions, so this provides enough latitude and also gives everyone the opportunity to look at the materials available so that everyone can make their voice heard.
And I will follow up, and then, Ms. Walsh, you may ask a question. This was a consideration, we looked at this with regards to the fact that, you know, we wanted the parents of people from other school districts who send someone to, say, CRTC, for instance, to be able to have a say in this, but we didn't want to look at it at a point that someone in Utah could actually come and, you know, challenge our materials. I'll also point out that while a person, a citizen, may challenge the materials, there is a process by which the superintendent follows to determine whether or not that challenge is, you know, addressed and how it is addressed. And I think I said that kind of close to correct, so, any other discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
So I guess the question, and I know you've worked really hard on this, and I, but residents of the town, of towns served by the Concord School District, so if they send to the CRTC, can they challenge material in an English class or only materials in the CRTC classes?
That was part of the discussion, and I'm going to let Superintendent Murphy to verify that one.
Thanks, you threw that one to me, didn't you?
I was so glad you didn't throw it over to me. Go ahead, Superintendent.
I think because they have, the students are, participate in our school and in our programs, they would allow that, to have a voice. And frankly, this board has allowed people from outer districts speak at meetings and over issues, so it doesn't happen very frequently, but you have, as past practice, allowed that.
So the answer is yes?
I just want to understand if it was a...
I think part of that discussion, to help clarify, was the fact that they do pay tuition to send, which is, comes out of their town or city tax coffers, and so that's...
And I guess, they're paying tuition to the CRTC, so where they're not taking our general courses all the time.
Although, aren't students, CRTC students allowed transportation, you know, length of day and stuff to take classes at Concord High? Or am I imagining that?
I don't think we see that, I don't believe that we see that. I'd have to talk to Mike, but I don't believe that we have that.
Mr. Reardon or Mr. Herbert, can you comment?
We do have requests around people wanting to attend Concord High School that are not residents of...
Oh, yeah, tuitioning, right, got it. Okay.
And this, they do have access to our library, which was part of that as well. Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
I don't want to dance on the head of a pin here as a lawyer, but towns, towns served by the Concord School District, Concord is a city, I prefer to have the word municipality or something like that in there.
Or should it be residents of school districts?
Well, they're not residents of the school district, though, if, if you live in Deering or whatever, right? So I, I would, I would just suggest that town is a little limiting and probably doesn't include residents of the city of Concord.
All right, so we want to amend this to change towns to municipalities?
How does that, what are the implications if Concord is autonomous versus other school districts? Are there any?
Well, it's, it's, it's the definition, from my perspective, of, in New Hampshire law, there are towns, there are cities, you know, so I think we need to use a term that collects both of those.
Yeah, the town, right, right, right.
So, this, by the way, is a first reading, so we're not going to vote on the final until, and this weekend, so that we can go back and, and have Ms. Fisher Anderson look at towns versus municipalities?
Well, Bob brings up a great point, because I just reviewed all the tuitions, you know, we do it at mid-year and then again at the end of the year, so I see all the bills and that come across from the, the grants that are through the career and technical grants, but in addition to the tuition payments made by the districts. And there is a city that sends a student here. So your point is well-taken, you know, the city of Manchester has one student who comes up for a course.
But that doesn't mean any resident of Manchester can talk to us about just that family.
Right.
Right, that's logical.
Well, I reviewed it as they could.
Oh, well, then we need to, and I'm glad we're looking at this.
So you suggesting that anybody from Manchester, then, could challenge our...
If you've got kids from Manchester and they're paying to send that child here, then they're a taxpayer, just like people in Deering are, or, you know...
Deerfield, right, right.
There are other, there's another policy for parents' requests, so there, but that would differ from a citizen's...
Would, now, you know, that would open it to citizens from Manchester?
Well, you know, I mean, my point, though, was by restricting it to towns, residents of the city of Concord.
Wouldn't be able to, and I agree, I think we should take a look at changing that to municipalities, and then...
Or including towns, comma, cities, whatever, you know.
I think if you just put municipalities, it covers all of it, I think, but I'm not an attorney, so.
But is that broader than you intended as a committee?
Well, I think we will review that again.
Discuss that, I think we have some discussions, the policy's been challenging.
Yes, I think we will rediscuss this.
And if there are other thoughts, I think, well, we don't have committee setups yet, so I guess, whenever the Communications and Policy Committee is formed, I recommend sending an email to the committee members.
To the chair.
The chair.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
And I apologize, I haven't been adjacent to this conversation. How have district librarians been consulted in this process, and if so, what are their thoughts about the policy as it stands?
Do we even have librarians, other than middle school?
Yeah, but we did, we consulted with the high school librarian on this because she was very concerned about challenges, given the recent news around us, so we did, this was important to her.
Great, no, I'm happy to hear that, thank you.
So, um, go ahead.
Are there any changes to the procedures for selection and reconsideration of library and instructional materials, or is that just attached?
I think that's, I think we wanted the information purposes.
Mm-hmm, okay. So I, I think we take that change, talk about it, have the Communications and Policy folks take a look at this, and if it turns out to be more substantial than just municipalities, we would come back as another first, second first reading, but otherwise, we would just come back in the second reading and note that change, if everyone is amenable to that approach. All right? All right, and that pretty much was everything with regards to the Communications and Policy Committee, so that ends my report from that. Next up, and let me just jump back here and get to my agenda, would be the reports from our, our subcommittees, our ad hoc committees, anti-racism equity subcommittees, who will be named?
Ms. Walsh first.
Then policy one fifteen.
Policy one fifteen, that's right, I didn't have that item right in here, so, yes, okay, sorry, I stand corrected, thank you very much for that one, which would be the consideration of, of Ms. Walsh's clarification or changes to policy one fifteen, I believe it is?
Oh, just very handsily.
Oh, thank you. Take him, pass it down.
Take him, pass it down.
Thank you to whoever had this forethought.
So pursuant to policy one forty-one, I am asking us to consider approving an amendment to the policy on filling a vacancy of a board or district officer. I am proposing after the first sentence, adding two sentences. The school board president shall make the nomination public at least twenty-four hours in advance of board consideration.
I guess that's...
Period. The board shall allow an opportunity for public comment before voting on the nomination, period, and then the rest would be the same. Except, actually, now that I look at it, it no longer, this next sentence doesn't comply with the charter anymore, so it shall serve until the next...
Till the, till the end of the year, isn't it?
Until the next calendar year, when voters of the district shall elect a replacement.
Actually, it would be not just from the same district, but same zone?
Right, yes.
Right.
To be compliant? To be compliant with that, and...
Well, actually, it would be zone or district.
Or district, depending on...
For the citywide.
For the citywide.
Yep.
And for the public comment beforehand, if it's at a meeting where we have two designated public comments, are we looking for an additional public comment?
No, I just, public, there should be cover.
Just making sure, ensuring that there's an opportunity for public comment.
That there, yes, that there would be an opportunity for public comment prior to the board voting, I believe is the way I understand it.
Did you write that out?
I did. Would you like it now? Do you want me to email it?
Would you just email it to me?
All right. So, the motion has been made to make an adjustment to policy 115. This is us working as kind of a committee as a whole, as opposed to sending it to the, to the Communications and Policy Committee. Per policy 141, we will need to have a two-thirds majority for this to pass, but first, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Higgins. Now, discussion. I have no problem, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, actually, I think it's a good change to the...
Transparency, that's good.
And, and I, I feel like this board, well, this new board, it doesn't have a lot of history with it, but all of the prior boards have always wanted to try to be as transparent and to have as much public input as possible. In my term, and I'm sure Ms. Higgins can confirm, we have often asked for more public comment and sought it out, so I think it's a good change myself. Any other discussion?
I would love to hear it again.
Yes, could you please?
All right. I'm going to read the whole new policy, because I, or at least the whole new first paragraph, because we made some other changes. The school board shall fill a vacancy occurring on the school board. The school board president shall nominate, and the school board shall elect by majority vote, an individual from the same zone or district, or if replacing a, or same zone, or if replacing a board member who was elected at large from the city at large. The school board president shall make the nomination public at least 24 hours in advance of board consideration. The board shall allow an opportunity for public comment before voting on the nomination. The individual elected shall serve until the next calendar year after voters of the district elect a replacement.
They don't come on right after the...
No, they changed it in the charter.
No, they changed it in the charter, this.
Because you came on right away.
Yes.
Yes, but this...
That's why I voted against that amendment to the charter, actually.
This charter, yeah, this charter clarified that.
Again, thinking about district, how to state district or zone.
Well, I did, we changed the zone.
Yeah, but at the very end of that paragraph.
When the voters of the zone.
Right, yes, of the zone, or district, yes.
I do have a question about paragraph two, as it relates to the letter of resignation. It would seem, as demonstrated today, that a letter of resignation is not required for a vacancy to...
It is not required if someone moves out of the district or zone, then it is, it fails to meet the requirements of the charter. So, let me read the second sentence. Yeah, in this case, this is one where it isn't, it is actually just a request, so that if someone knows they're moving out or no longer going to be a resident of the zone, we ask that they let us know, they let the board know as soon as possible, so we can plan accordingly for replacement. And one of the areas I think that would come into would be if, for instance, I knew I was selling my home and moving outside of the district, and I was listing it, and I knew I was not going to be here, I would, and I did that in August, I would let the board know so that they could plan.
Jenny let us know she was moving to Maine, so that, and then Pam was able to run for the seat.
So that the position could be, could be at the earliest possible election. It is a request, but if someone had an emergency and just needed to resign, that certainly wouldn't be a requirement. But thank you for that question.
Yes, the should versus the must.
Yes, yes. Can you read the first part again, since we had changed a few of those again, the first paragraph, just so everybody's clear on that?
I was going to say, I don't, I don't have that written down.
No, I'm hoping that, I know that Ms. Walsh was keeping tabs on that.
The school board shall fill a vacancy occurring on the school board. The school board president shall nominate, and the school board shall elect by majority vote, an individual from the same, same zone, or if replacing a board member who was elected at large from the city at large. The school board president shall make the nomination public at least 24 hours in advance of board consideration. The board shall allow an opportunity for public comment before voting on the nomination. The individual elected shall serve until the next calendar year after residents of the zone or the city at large elect a replacement. I'm looking for Bob's sign off.
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with that, but, you know, as I read that last sentence, until the next school board election, the next school board, we have a school board election every year.
Yes, but they don't take, they don't take their seat until, that's the change I made.
It was changed to calendar year.
Shall serve until the next calendar year, because that was the charter change.
Change.
Yeah, okay.
So...
All right, yeah, I'm fine with your language.
All right. Everybody else, anybody else have any changes? We can, of course, come back and revisit this again if somebody finds something, but not any further discussion? Then not seeing any, let's call a vote. All those in favor of the, and we do need two-thirds, all those in favor of the change to policy 115, as proposed in the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We clearly passed the two-thirds, so please make that change in policy. And thank you, Ms. Walsh, I think that's, I think that's...
Yeah, I like it.
An improvement to our policies. All right. And thank you for not letting me miss that change in numbers and all there. With that, we will now go to subcommittees, Anti-Racism Equity Subcommittee. Mr. Weinberg, will you be taking this one?
I think I'll be taking both of them.
Okay, excellent, go right ahead, then.
Not too, too much to report. As Superintendent Murphy wrote about, we're looking at reorganization and how to have maybe a coordinating group versus a more general group that has a more variety of voices. Also, Quincy has started as the D I J Director for the district. Currently, I don't know when the next meeting is for our Equity Advisory, I, I don't think one has been scheduled yet, but I think we're looking at different ways to not phase out New Hampshire listens, but find a way that we can have a sustainable operations without kind of external forces always needing to come in. So, there's been a lot of discussions about that, we've been working hard. Any other additions there, Superintendent?
No.
No? And then, any questions, I guess?
I just think that having Quincy more involved is a great idea, actually, I have very much, I think that's, I think, you know, for him to take a lead in this is appropriate, and I look forward to it, so.
And I think that's definitely been, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
Just one other, one other question, and I don't know whether it's for you, Jonathan, or for Superintendent, but I think I saw in the paper today that a group of people attended an event at the Concord, Bank of New Hampshire stage, and, you know, young, young people from the district, both high school and grade school levels, mostly new Americans, and I was just wondering if the school district had anything to do with that, or any input on that, or was requested to do anything with that?
Nothing.
All right.
But there are, I, I am not sure either, from my understanding, there's during, what night is it, International Night, there's a great performance on the stage at the high school as well. So, there could be, like, groups, like, be the Change Club or Project Story, a community organization who are, like, collaborating with them, but I'm not sure if there's any direct district involvement.
Well, one, one of the things that I did do was, I invited the new chair, if you will, of Change Concord, Fisto, and he's going to join me and Quincy next week at our regular, because I meet with Quincy once a week, so he's going to join us in that meeting, and he's really the connection to a lot of those events, so I'm hoping that we can bridge that gap.
That's good, great.
Any other question? Thoughts, statement?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm curious about the graphic. Is this just an internal graphic for us to understand the meanings of the Equity Subcommittee, or is this something that would be pushed out to people outside this room, and if so, there's so many acronyms. I'm new here.
No.
I'm just curious, like, who, who this graphic is for?
Superintendent?
Yeah, this graphic was for the committee, the advisory, just to help us with the organization and also to be able to help Quincy and all of our leaders on that committee, and community leaders, too, to understand the various activities that we want and who we would like to be involved, like a student group. You know, we want our students to have a group, they need to have a voice in the, and we need to address that. Task groups, I'm sure it was SEL, MTSSB, and PD, probably, but those are currently, committees in place in the district, and we want to be able to integrate with their work, the work of the advisory. But so, it's really an internal working document for the committee?
I think on that vein, kind of what, we could make it more accessible, so like SEL, social emotional learning, MTSSB, multi-tier systems of support.
What does V stand for?
Yeah, I think just...
Behavior.
Behavior.
Okay.
And then PD is for professional development, so I think that's a good thought for, like, the next iteration of this, is just to remove the acronyms and just spell them out.
All right.
And, and then I guess for the sustainability, unless there are any other questions or thoughts? For the sustainability, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago, and then the district had a meeting as well with, from what I heard, with some solar panel folks, I didn't know if there was any updates there with Kelly Obert.
Yes, Jack and I had a Zoom meeting, it was very informative, it's something we're going to talk further with, and I had some other properties throughout the city, too, that you could participate with net metering, so we're going to continue those discussions as we move forward.
Awesome. And I think one of the biggest takeaways from the last meeting was, we'd love to find a time for Matt to come and speak to the group, so I think if the Superintendent, Matt and I could all find a time to do that, that would be wonderful, because for all I know, Matt knows a lot more than I do and has a lot more of the day-to-day knowledge, so I think just continuing to bridge that gap between the city and school district and trying to build relationships is very important.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Weinberg? All right, thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Other business enrollment, Superintendent?
No, I think it's pretty steady. The only question I have on this report, and it's the monthly enrollment report with the blue sections in it, I, John brought that to my attention, from November 22 to December, Deerfield kids, it was, it, it's, it shows a 20% decrease in students, that, that doesn't seem right, so I'm, I'm going to have to do a little digging there. Yeah, I'll talk to Michael and I'll talk to Ann Fowler up at the, up at CRT and get some information, so.
Just might want to ask, in future enrollment reports, correct for going forward, the September high school enrollment, I think Deerfield was double counted.
Yeah, we did chat, we did...
But it's like continuing, right?
Yeah.
Someday, somebody's going to go back and look and what happens with the 1,600 students.
Yeah, where did they go? Thank you. Other questions with regards to enrollment?
Class sizes, I know that's always an issue, you always want to pay attention to that, but everything looks really good and it's well within your class size policy, the current class size policy.
Very good. Other questions? All right, not seeing any, let's move on to calendar.
Yeah, I could use some help here. On Wednesday, we have a Capitol Facilities, but we really don't know the committee yet, so I'm, I'm, I think maybe we need some time to put our, you're, you need some time to put some committees together and...
Yeah, it makes no sense.
It doesn't make any sense to...
We're not in a big hurry about anything.
And, and it's, right now, we don't have a lot to report.
Right.
You know, the, the only work that we did was, I know that there's some bills at the legislature, I'm waiting to see when they're going to be heard. We did partner with some other districts, they all did reach out to their legislators, I contacted them, to what degree, whether they signed on and sponsored the bill or not, I don't know that, but they did get a favorable response from their legislators.
Should we move it to the 25th?
Should we move, that's what I was going to suggest, we have an open date on the 25th, would it be appropriate to move it to there?
We could do that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Only other thing is you have your board retreat on the, on the 14th, and I would like to ask for some help from you. I have begun, begun to put together the agenda, I'd like to get it done and out in your hands. Obviously, it's a Saturday morning from 8:00 to 2:00 here in the, in the boardroom. We would like to talk a little bit about safety. Matt and Jack and I would do a presentation and discussion with you on safety issues. Dean Eggerd is coming to do, talk about school board roles, I think that's always good to bring Dean back and, as, as your legal advisor, to help you with those, those things. We'd like to also at least update you on funding, where we are with ESSR, where we are with building aid and adequacy, and some time to talk about buildings, and the status of buildings, the concerns that we have relative to buildings, so.
Okay, and then I would...
What other topics would you like? I guess that's one, I didn't, I, I don't, I, it seems like a lot there, but it, it's not all, all, it won't absorb the entire time, so.
I was going to say, the executive committee hasn't really had a chance to put anything together yet, since we've only just assumed positions, but we have input, does Ms. Walsh, you have anything?
I would love for the board to have a chance to have a discussion and be updated on where our student assessments are and where we think our students are. We had a preliminary discussion, I think, in instructional at one point, where, you know, coming out of the pandemic, we were falling below the statewide average in a number of critical areas and grade levels, and the discussion was, and we're going to evaluate this further and get back, and maybe you've gotten back to instructional, but I think the whole board would benefit from sort of a presentation and a discussion of where we are and what we're going to do about it.
Is that appropriate for the retreat or for a different meeting?
Right.
Just because I know that even though you say we have more time, we always seem to have little time, and we will have some discussion on committees, I believe, at that. I, not that I disagree with Ms. Walsh, I think we definitely need to have that, I'm just curious as to the appropriate time, whether that's, whether you could do that in the time allotted, I guess.
What other things do you want, I mean, you, you just indicated that you were interested in committee assignments, do you want to talk about that?
Well, we can assign, we can go through committee assignments, but in the past, we have also had committee goals and some committee over reviews. I don't know if the board is interested in that, but I always thought that was, I have found that to be very beneficial for the committees to just spend a few minutes together to discuss what their priorities would be, I don't know if anybody else is, but I like, I thought that was helpful. And then I, I don't know, does anybody else have other items that they would like to, typically at our retreat is a chance for us to, one, first get together and be organized as, as a board, but also to fill in any questions and gaps that those of us who have been around for a while may have, as well as those new members may have, so, any other?
I feel like athletic facilities is another place.
That is probably an update or a topic that this board will be addressing in the coming year. Other, other areas? If, no pressure, you can send them in to, please send them in... If, no pressure, you can send them into, please send them into the superintendent and copy the executive committee on that, if you would, because we will be looking at that. At the end of this meeting, I would like to, to just have a minute with Ms. Walsh and then we'll reach out to Ms. Hastings with regards to setting some schedules for executive committee meetings. And I want to also thank you all for your input and putting together the, the committees' preferences that you have. As I looked at them, once again, you know, we have a lot of people want to be on certain committees and we won't be able to meet everyone's desires, but we do want to let you get involved with those things that you feel you can make a good contribution or would prefer being. Mr. Cotton?
Just a, stepping back one second, we just moved Capitol Facilities to the 25th and it's also scheduled for the first.
Oh.
For the next, we haven't gotten even to February, good point.
Maybe we just have it the first, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, could I propose that we do a policy meeting on the 25th?
Sure. You can propose whatever.
Uh, yes, because we're going to need to take a look at something before the next board meeting and we have no policy meetings.
I will just mention, I'm not going to be, I get back on the 25th late at night.
How about, then, could we do it on the 30th?
The 23rd could be flexible as well.
City and community, you're saying?
Or if, if I were still involved in that hypothetically, that'd be a flexible.
You're saying we could use that date?
Yes.
Okay, so, so no Capitol Facilities on the 25th and we'll plug in a policy committee?
Somewhere.
Somewhere, and I'm hoping that Bob, because.
Well, I'm going to be gone from the 17th to the 25th.
Okay, all right.
Other, other absences that would be.
Oh, wait, wait, I have an idea. What about, we do the Capitol Facilities the 25th and we do the policy the first, and we get rid of that Capitol Facilities meeting, then you're back and it's still before the February 6th school board meeting. Ta-da!
Yeah, I think that's, that works.
One more time, go ahead.
Okay, so we, the 25th now becomes Capitol Facilities like we just did, right? It stays that. And February 1st, we cancel that Capitol Facilities meeting because we just had one and we give it to Communications and Policy.
Policy.
Ta-da!
Um, yeah, I think that'll work.
That'll work. Your board meeting is on the 6th of February, so you have a little bit of time. We do need to have an instructional committee, which we don't have, so.
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Not until.
On the 9th.
Oh, yeah, we can't do it, that's right, it's before the, we can't do that either, right?
Well, here's the, here's we've got to be careful now. You're going to start your budget deliberations on the 8th, so that's your first budget meeting, and then you have budget meetings on the 13th and then the 15th. I just want to caution you that you don't usually add a lot of committee meetings when you're doing budget. Otherwise, you're out three and four nights.
But I thought we already, oh, I see, so.
So it will be the goal of the executive committee to have committee assignments prior to the 9th. Let's, that's the solution we need to have, because we're going to start bumping up against the, the budget.
Yeah.
And so I will reach out to the executive committee to schedule something so we have some resolution on committees by the, by the 9th. Typically, as, when I, in my prior years as president, I always, you know, I know it says the president assigns committee, but I have always involved the entire executive committee to try to work on this, and I plan on doing so again, but I think there's no reason why we can't have that pulled together by the 9th. And we'll let, let anybody who's on the instructional committee know that they have a meeting, so we'll do that as quickly as we can. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, because we have a negotiations committee.
Yeah, I know. It all comes fast and furious.
It does, it does, so.
Can I, can I just ask on the negotiations, what, is there a contract that's coming up that I can't remember?
Yeah, the Ed Assistance.
Ed Assistance.
We're meeting with them on the 18th, again.
Okay, Ed Assistance, okay.
We're meeting Wednesday, but we're also the 18th, but you've heard nothing. I shouldn't say nothing. You've heard something so far, but we need more direction.
So that, that contract is on our radar agenda for this year.
Good question, though. Thank you very much.
So for the rest of that month then, I think we're fairly filled with, with meetings, so we do have the 30th as a, if we need something on, in January, January 30th. So we have, that's open right now if we need it, okay?
Yep, looking into February?
February, policy on the 1st, your school board meeting on the 6th, and then negotiations, we thought maybe we could take at 5 o'clock and then jump into the budget work sessions at 5:30. All the meetings are from 5:30 to, Jack, what time do we do those budget meetings? Till when? 7?
7. Scheduled till 7.
Yeah, and again, budget, again, on the 15th. I would tentatively set the legislative breakfast on the 17th, that's after, my understanding, the governor presents his budget, so we now can talk to our legislators about what's, what's on the docket, and that's followed by an executive committee on the 20th. So you have a busy time now, once you jump into budget.
Mm-hmm. All right. Anybody have any thing they want to call out with regards to the calendar? All right.
Do we have non-public?
Uh, yes, we do, but prior to going into non-public, I need to ask for a public comment session, I believe, we're at that point, I have to jump back here. Yes, we have the final public comment session, if anyone out there would like to make a public comment, please step up, this can be on any topic, and just state your name. Thank you, Tony.
Sure. Excuse me, Tony Chanello, Little Pond Road, in the district. So some kudos and some critiques. First off, kudos, as, and I will comment as a member of the working press, I want to thank Kathleen and her team, well, we're now in a new year, so I want to thank Kathleen and her team for their access and ability to get back to me quickly on a number of issues last year. It's, in the time that Kathleen has been here at Franklin Bass as well, there's been a lot more accessibility for the public and the press, and we appreciate that very much, and I wanted to say that publicly. While school board members or school district employees may not always like what is published in the press, I appreciate people getting back to me quickly, I have a lot of work to do. As many of you know, I try really hard not to speak at public meetings, I, it's, it's a very difficult role trying to do my job, but also be a parent, a voter, a taxpayer, a resident, everything else. But I, I want to commend Barbara for her comments earlier because many of you weren't, let me see, how do I say this in a better strategic way? So I've been back in Concord almost 21 years, before that, I attended a number of school board meetings when I was a kid, and if you ever see Roy Schweiker at city council meetings, you, you would have loved his dad, who used to come to school board meetings all the time, talking about every issue. I learned a lot from his public testimony as a young man. But I was struck by what she said before the vote earlier. This, this board, while you all are individuals and can't be, are all great people individually, you, you've been working very hard to rebuild your credibility in the community over a lot of things that have gone on in the past 19, 18 years. It goes back before Howie Leung. And it's not, it's a new phenomenon to have a school board president be the school board president for three, four, five, six years. That was done about 20 years ago, when a certain school board member and a certain school superintendent were very, very close. Their families would have dinner every Friday night at Armano's. I know, I ran into them a lot, because I like to go to Armano's too. And they kept people out of the loop, duly elected people of this board out of the loop on some of the things that were going on. I don't have to remind any of you who are here for the Howie Leung situation, that only two of you knew what was going on for months, for months, because there were only two people in the leadership who knew what was going on. It's not right. It's a new phenomenon, with the exception of Betty Hoadley, who was always the default president because no one wanted to do the job, because that's a lot of work. And, but it used to be a revolving thing. It's also not really good, and I was really struck by it, that it really seemed like your vote tonight was an inside job. And I wouldn't necessarily make that accusation without having more information, but when she said during the comment period, you know, everybody should be nominated and everybody should be seconded and then you can lose, not by not being nominated, but by being voted out, that's a valid point, whether or not Bob wanted to serve as president or not, or anybody else. The courts really frown upon what's called chain organized voting, circumventing the open meeting law, and I'm not saying you did, you did that, but circumventing the open meeting law to get to a conclusion on a vote. None of you are the mayor, right? The mayor's job in the city of Concord is to run the meeting. You're all nine equals. Traditionally, the leadership positions have always moved around every year, up until about 2004, when that, that school board member got elected and was very cozy with the superintendent, as I said before. School board member A can't call school board member B to say, how are you going to vote on this, and then call school board meeting C and D and E along the way. That is, that, that's, you can't do that. You have to have your votes in the, in the public session. Now, it's a little bit more, you know, it's a little bit more complicated when you're voting for the position and Kathleen is running the meeting and everything, so, but, you know, it, it's, I hope you don't, I, I love you, Jim, you know that, you and I are on really good terms, I don't even want to say this this way, but I hope you don't run next year. And I hope that you find either somebody else who sits down and pinned to run, because it's really not healthy to have people in leadership positions for three or four years. And it wasn't healthy when it was before, when two people knew what was going on on this board and seven people didn't, and the public didn't know because the seven people didn't know. I, I, I hope you understand what I'm saying, and I hope you understand the concern that, that I'm raising. Not that any of you circumvented the open meeting law, not that you, that you did a trail for votes, but that from out here, it really did look that way. And I wouldn't have necessarily said anything except that Barbara said, you know, everybody who gets nominated should be seconded, and then you didn't second it when it was like, kind of, like, you know, pretty obvious to do.
That was pretty ugly.
So, that's, and I, as a voter and as a parent and as somebody who has one-on-one relationships with a bunch of you and know, and knows you and knew you before you were on the board, you know, I, I found that disappointing and, and I, I really think you are working so hard to get beyond some of the other things, you know, and I'll say this one, one more thing. If you wonder why only three people show up to a budget hearing, it's because out there, they know it's a done deal. When 12 people come up to a working session for a $200 million middle school and then you wonder why, it's because out there, they think the fix is in, and it isn't always in, but that's what they think. And, you know, I just know how hard everybody has worked on this board to get beyond some of the issues before. And I hope that what I've said is taken in the way that it's said and not necessarily the way it was presented, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chanello, and I don't take any offense to anything you said. I, I agree that, you know, dynamic change and transition is, is very beneficial. We, at least from my understanding and at least from my point of view, you know, want to be very transparent and assure you there's no fix in, but, you know, and we will continue to try to be as open and answer as many of your questions from the media part of your statement as we possibly can, and thank you for coming for your comments. Are there any further comments from the public tonight? Not seeing any, we will move on and I will need a motion to go into non-public session. Pursuant, and I don't have, I got to flip back to my, unless someone else has that.
Pursuant to RSA 91A, colon, 3C.
Yep.
3C personnel, thank you very much for, all right, do I have a second?
Sir.
Seconded by Ms. Higgins, all those, oh, this has to be a roll call, I believe, so.
I'll do it, Brenda's not here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Or Mr. Weinberg, following this consistent. Ms. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Wel, Walsh, I'll call you Walsh, and I say yes. unanimous.
All right, we will go into non-public session. For those watching on the television, I believe the only thing that we will do after we come back from non-public session is adjourn. Does anybody have anything else that we would do before that? Then that's all we will do, and that won't be on Concord TV or the streaming services, so we can end that now. We are in non-public session, thank you.